Yeah.
Stabilize, we'll keep an eye on it. If we're able to stabilize more, we would definitely have to do something about that, but where we're at right now. Don't have immediate plan.
Well, I appreciate the fact that you learned and looked at it. Because a lot of time we talk.
Yeah, I, I think we all around this table feel that that's just important. We just want to know that we're not just pushing the side. That's a large thing on our plate right now, but that's what we got ahead of us. I feel here, I get it, and I wish we could just say, hey, there's a million dollars to it. These are the hat, this is what makes these jobs add for us, so we have to say no or something.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you guys. Good evening, everyone.
And this is going on, that's maybe that day on the bridge, bridge project.
Bridge, oh yes.
Yes. So, yeah, I definitely can do that, uh, so. They're in the talks and then, you know, after our site visit, they, they patched that concrete in. We will at the end of the day help with the roads of the rebar. Sam laughs the rebar a lot nice, look really, really good, and they can be handled in place. So, uh, the new concrete, they're actually, uh, uh, here looking today. They worked in on board and on Friday, the additional, but, um, the rain's gonna hold down. But we're still on schedule, we're working with DOT, working with campgrounds, the bridge is being completely shut down on, uh, on Wednesday. He's been providing a couple of signboards where, where, uh, renting an additional signboard, the one we all. Gonna move the campgrounds, new signs from here on Route ten, we're gonna move them down to Winchester off of, um, off of coming, uh, Westwood Village Road, campgrounds gonna be messaged into their campers. When you hear back from the state, they're not responding, we just go do it ourselves, but the state's portion of West, uh, or Pat's, a lot of branches hangover that they're concerned about, the campers, if the state doesn't do it all well, if that cleaned up. But we should be good for that traffic detail on Wednesday. That was one of the important features, trying to get the bridge done. Uh, sort of crossing the road, had that done, the road opened back up, so. We just don't have the resources to do a vocal at the same time. Everything's going great with the, with the bridge, with the wooden deck in. I just remember races before I came here, one of the biggest challenges, filling up the old boards, and one of the challenges, well, they actually. Probably have concern that they filled up too many and they weren't sure how many they're gonna be able to get back down. The little bridge, that's hoping back up at seven o'clock, so. We, we're gonna, at least a twelve plan, the bridge open, but that probably will be done, had a schedule. But DOT's taking advantage of it being down, they are coming Monday to do some asphalt path work to the road there. I have a tree company coming in Friday, remove three halfless pine trees, a wall shutdown, hazards to the bridge. Uh, then if we have extra time in the next few days, we may do some painting, all shut down. Uh, so that is moving, moving ahead well. The dam project has started, the trees have all been removed, uh, just waiting for the green line out, fishing game, start pumping water, but. That is heading in the right direction, they have a birch tree construction leaving on Monday. Tuesday, when you follow the trees off, check them, clean them up, actually looked really good, uh, cleaning up all those dead trees that were allowed to take from the bank. Uh, so they're, they're, they're doing well, it's a matter of getting the green lights, start pumping water. And, uh, soon as, soon as they get the water down, they're gonna stabilize and, uh, long see that smoke where the trees are removed, and then it's the excavation of the existing dam, so they get down for the. Stating material on and even start to do the cleanup, so that is, that is doing well. And then the other, we've had a lot going on. FEMA stuff is coming to him, we're still working on, maybe money, um, reimbursed for the damages, but they went in and all state paid Palahill, the one who laid out the damage last year. So, Palahill was back to three, because there's three storm damage, the culverts have all been cleaned out. Uh, I am working with FEMA on some possible mitigation to be. I think it's approximately twenty-five hundred feet of real swell on East Shore, over the help of some of the erosion control. And, uh, FEMA said there are some mitigation funds available, so I'm at the preliminary stage of working with the E S to see what type of funding will be required. And, uh, and coming up with a combination of cost and it's giving a little food, but it sounds to be optimistic.
Bucket rock up and running?
Yeah.
Looking up till you know.
Yeah, absolutely, I come, it's quite helpful. Gets used, uh, we use all the time to wear our cotton brush, but it gets used quite a bit when you get a call, tree anymore. Uh, stuff at the bridge, so, semi very flat, flat holes, it gets used quite a bit, it's a nice, a nice problem. Where we get that, and if I, I bought that off a municipal, we provide money to. Lots of crap, and we're probably worried right now, it's pretty gorgeous, we talked about combine.
Like a line trap looking like?
Yeah, it's a, it's a four, um, four fifty, I think, so it's a kind of duty shot, but I'd be feeling it down and then thirty-seven.
Oh, the kid coming.
So, yeah, that does come quite. Uh, we have paving, we can see all where Hill Road's almost ready for paving. We finished all the range fights up there, we have a little prep. Uh, and then hopefully we're gonna be starting here on Paulville, we're getting that ready to begin the following computers.
Taking the top hill road all the way up to the end of what's been approved.
So, plan is going up to the top of the hill, as we know, we have a property owner that's not cooperating. I've been communicating with the town's surveyor. I want him to go in and do an actual survey, so I know exactly where the property boundaries are. Uh, for any of those trees, the other property owners that cooperate, we're gonna go in there, cut a bunch of trees, add range. Why not? So basically, the steep portion of the hill where it levels up at the top will be paved. I wanna add a wider than it is now, the one top, the owner that's not cooperating. The patchment shows we have forty or fifty feet right away through there, I don't trust that, not the side cutting trees. So I sent a bunch of information to the surveyor. Wait near back from the surveyor, we need to pay him a lot, we'll pull survey to make sure where the boundaries are, I'll, I'll do so. Last in line of the stuff, trees that aren't on the right way.
Can we take that all the way to Libra Heights, so we can come up with a budget to spray that all the way through? Where's Libra Heights? All of the whole road.
Oh, you're talking all, I was talking about Paul.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought I, I'm sorry, sorry.
No, I can work on that. I can work on that, so, so all of our hills will be paved to where it becomes class six. And then.
We don't have any survey issues there.
No, survey issues on, uh, we're paving out the top, very top portion of the steep part of the hill, and the property owner of the top. Not cooperating as far as it's widening, so that's what I'm gonna do surveying. All the hill road is not, no issue with paving, let's say, uh, change out all of that drainage pipes through class, if the drainage swells are, are, uh, reestablished, and now it's just a matter of grading before they come to pavement. But if you're interested in looking at a number, continue the road on. Work on. Not knowing what's up there for material as far as ledge.
There could be. Definitely some big bulge.
So, yeah, big hole is not, not, you can jack it and then with a big excavator, but if you didn't land, it's gonna be glass and just some added expenses, but I, I probably would walk in. But the class six portion is in really good shape. Uh, the woman rebuilt it in two thousand twenty, then it got washed out in two thousand twenty-one. She sent, rebuilt it again, so up to the top is in really good shape, just where here is off, they want class six. So the measurements roughly what it is, why, we'll see how much. How much, uh, grades changed up there.
We should know that, that this should be measurable on the chi.
Oh, yeah, we have that, a little desperate. So like I said, we could come up with, um, a rough estimate of what's going to cost. Let's see what the elevations are like out there as far as, and. Without having test kits for materials, it could be a little bit difficult, but maybe able to access it from the other side. It gets the test kits and how to pick fallings and pick. If they, if the three feet will be a trial, a trial, the future of all the things, is that meaningful?
Then with regard to Sawyer's Crossing Road, and in anticipation of the cameras coming in. What, what would the state do if we proactively put our own signs in? Just to make people aware that A, there is a covered bridge company. And if you saw it, and you did work there, and then B, that there are defensible offenses.
I see, uh, I mean, definitely, I think they would be open to cameras, final defenses. They recently added a sign, totally, I haven't seen it, but they went out and did their survey, which we requested. They added a sign, I think if we had signs we wanna put up, we'd have to ask for authorization from. Uh, I don't, I don't see it being an issue, but the one thing I caught, like I said, if people see the bridge and look at their truck and say, I think I can fit through it, traffic's in front of stop there. One way to stop.
You're, you're on camera.
Yeah, yeah.
What's the legislation?
Yeah.
You can.
For line, yeah, and that, and then civil, like, my plan is when this project is completed, I'm gonna reach out to a. Insurance company for the car company that had. And provide that with what the cost was, and if there's an issue, we're gonna have to change it, go out and civil for it. The way, it would be a little bit of an eyesore, but the way to stop, because in the bridge, you see, I've seen what people put up. Angle steel going across the top, pull the bridge, and bridge not gonna get hit it. I don't know how the state would feel about that, I guess you've seen.
Away from the bridge, so that this way, right? To the perfect height.
Yeah.
And then you head right in.
We're gonna hit that before you hit the cover grid, and it won't get in.
See, there's a lot of it up there.
The other thing is, the bridge hits itself. There are people on cell phones, and when they block it, they cut the porch short, and they hit that outside wall off. Tractor drive, one specific case, uh, if he was on a cell phone, decided we're. Well, as far as the old ride though, we put those beams out, we looked into something that is a little bit cosmically, but it would be a little bit of an eyesore. Uh, but I would stop the bridge again, yes. Although, the people that live on Sawyer's Crossing Road, you got the people that are all upset with the roads being blow, but the people that live on Sawyer's Crossing Road, they don't wanna see that bridge ever opened up again, so. Peaceful and tranquil down.
Dancing in the street.
Well, yeah, they're out there watching, saying, this is great, don't open it back up. True. Yeah, so as of this time next week. Watching something happen, that bridge should be, the dam should be done. Uh, all the cosmetic repairs should be fixed, and if I, we're a little short on staff right now, if I can swing it, we're still, they're done in those. Monday, Tuesday days, we have slated for the poles, and then do some painting for the gate ones. Right, like we already started in downtime, we can do some painting for the guardrails and the gate ones, probably, they're gonna paint that when we have downtime, I think we can do most of that all the way. Uh, the bigger, just besides, we've had the contract out.
And as far as spending the sidewalk across the river, have we, that had a chance to consider?
We've had, we've had some talks about it, and it's gonna be, it's gonna be fun, it should. At that beginning, I'll see what our weight is saying.
Could it be a suffer the bridge, or would it be that, uh?
I don't know if the engineers think that that goes posted, handling the additional weight, uh, I think it possibly could be just off the side, but, but women can fight. So it wouldn't have to be that large, but bringing the bridge in the middle of it. But I think it would be, it's a, you know, where we see that's basically. I don't know, woman, woman is expensive, or woman would be the lightest, and, uh, if you limited the bicycles and like no horse, I mean, like that, uh. I think it's very polar. Definitely, it's, you know. That would be the cheaper, that would be the, I see even Canada's has. The bridges everywhere, the needs large, small, but there's just crossing areas, and I've seen the stat, like a woman cave on the side of a. A bridge that wanted wide located, just to get off the side of the bridge.
In their coverage?
Not, not for, uh. Uh, not for, uh. Like I said, I would give it some engineering fees, and what that, a full separate bridge would be. Rather expensive. But, I mean, if a rail film is a rail film, if you have more access and more rope, it's something that would be, would be nice that down. Thank you.
Good. Thank you, Joey.
Oh, then. I'll come back to the board, I did make a change order on this bridge. The bridge had galvanized, and we, we spent a bit of galvanized fasteners. I upgraded it the same steel fasteners, just a lot of galvanized fasteners, failed, it broke off, so it's gonna be. Gonna be a bit, one month, three or four thousand dollars for the stainless, uh, hardware, that is what I, what I will put back. The only thing that brings C I D, uh, I just didn't, we're spending all the money on anyone, kind of, galvanized fasteners, need a week's long. All the current bridges have galvanized on them, crew has been using stainless when they break, but the, their bet was, that's what we wanted. Thank you.
Thank you. Alice. Alice Romanek, carpenter, home lease extension. Things that could be done.
They're going. That list where you have any, I don't think. Say, but this is, Emily, I mean, this. My picture's soft, so, I mean, um, this is kind of like our proposal for it. You want to, no, they have this, I can read little parts of it. Um, so, the board director and I, they're meeting with Michael and him.
Adam.
Um, I decided we'd like to ask for a twenty year lease of the garden. Um, to act, it's been one of these, so we'd like to. Jump into a twenty year lease with a review every five years, only for the, um, the brands. Uh, just to give us a little more opportunity with some larger grants, so that we can.
We, we, we obviously haven't had an opportunity to read this, but instead of a twenty year, would you consider a five year with three five year options?
The only reason we were considering a twenty year was because of the opportunities for grant. To, for both the town and us to help the building, um, that's our, that's our main, our ideal, is. The building needs a lot of work, you guys can subside this, this, this whole time, and we're, we're almost at that point. According to our, our, our schedule, we have the three thousand dollars a month, starting in January, and that's what we're proposing to get that work, and, um. And so I went into the Northern Borders Grant, I'm looking to, uh, community, uh.
Build a block by its authority.
The, the C D F A is the beginning of the community block, right? Um, so just some larger options, just because, I mean, as you guys know, if the, if the building needs, then group on part of it, and there's, it's old, it's an old building, old buildings, some of the old building problems. Um, and we have some, some things we would love to do to make it, so we, so our functions can flow a little better. Um, so we could hit, you know, a little more capacity, so we can give, increase our quality, um. So, we, when I'm looking to these grants, I can, I can apply to them, I can apply them on the borders as my profit. But they want to see that I need a purchase payment before I have a lease for the year lease. Um, then the community block grants would be, you, they recommend you start a planning grant anyway, which is what we were suggesting, suggesting. Um, it's a twenty-five thousand dollar planning grant that the town would apply for, and the C D F A, then it means into community block grant. Which can be up to five hundred thousand dollars with a match, which we are willing to deliver for that, um. But the twenty-five thousand would be a feasibility study, it could be energy audit, it could include all of that, just to see. If the project is viable, it's a deal within that building, and. But yeah, and that comes into a twenty year also, at least a twenty year worth purchasing. A lot of what we're running into is that they want us to be purchasing a property for us to rent it, to do any, you know, renovation related, um, money. And I have taken offer up to a hundred thousand dollars, but told me I couldn't use it for, um, for anything in a rented building. I can purchase things if we're not renovating the building. Um, so yeah, that was, that was where the twenty years paid them, which is because that, that's the cutoff for most of these larger grants. Yeah, so that's what we're proposing, is that it would help us with the material and root. Um, so it helps with the yard drainage, there's been a lot of, uh, animal damage to the base of the windows and the foundation. Uh. We make attention, it's kind of sporting, right? Angels can get in, it's very often. Um, the heating system, we've been loved, there's a couple of worries that dropped the building, that, like, the heat ran, we were working, doesn't work. Um. We, he's fixed up some of the outdoor lighting, uh, there's a version that's one of them. And, you know, there's just, there's just things that we want, we want to be there, and we love it up there, the kids love it, we've been talking with the, um. Confederation Commission about working with the Nation Trail Act. You know, we had a foster birthday the other day, we had parents come and helped us put in. Fence, and they came and cleaned up the garden, and they, someone put a railing on the back porch, and, you know, cleaned out all of the. The woods and the, the kids and their families just wanted to leave there, and we, we all stayed there, so. That is. I was going around, a little baby back there, kind of.
Yeah, but Alice is gonna mention, but we're getting to the point where the rent is basically gonna cover all the usage costs, which is great. But she's also saying, hey, this, you know, this is a hundred plus year old building, it's tired, it needs some improvements. Is the town gonna pay for that, is she gonna pay for that, so that, that's why we're looking at the longer term leases, gives us options of maybe neither of us, maybe we could get. Big grant that will help do a lot of improvements, so that's, that's a real driver board, and obviously gives her a little more stability, we all know the big piece one year deal was because. Once you started, the year, we started to talk about the next one.
Yeah.
Uh, so I think longer, in some ways, is definitely better. And that's where we came to the, you know, what's the, what's the, what's the shortest term that'll be long enough, it seemed like this is where we can do, so.
And there would still be the options to, for either of us to back, because in the least, partly, there's, there's a ninety day pause. There's. They, they say, hey, no, we're done, but I don't, I don't.
As of right now, have we put any, the town put any money into that building since she's been there, has we done anything?
Yeah, Mike, Mike's done a lot of, a lot of work up there, but it's not been the huge, not been at roof level, it's like. Getting out a wall here and there, fixing the floor.
So are you saying that? We're already doing everything here that she's asking, we're doing the general maintenance, we.
Yeah.
Are we looking at fixing the heat, do we do that now?
But I, I didn't, I haven't followed up with Mike yet, there was, my guy, I called the guy, um. Service guy, I don't know if he ever came back with the parker, we don't need to keep that rumor now. But, but he did, oh, yeah.
So, what I'm trying to find out is.
Yeah, they did.
Do we?
They.
Since you've been there, has the town been doing these things that you got here, the heating?
Yeah, that's like original lease, all of that.
Yeah, so this isn't being added on, this is continuing.
Oh, we're, we're in mo- mainly break fix mode, which if it breaks, and it becomes an emergency, that we fix it, I think she's looking to try to. Get ahead of some of that stuff partly.
Yes.
And just do some more things to make it more appropriate.
Yeah. Yeah, we, we, uh. Yeah, anytime we call for them.
So these grants that you, you have, they really wanna see twenty year, ten would help, or something like that, it has to be at least twenty years?
Twenty years, the community block, they definitely told me that they wanted to see. That, I believe it was with the building, has to be used for childhood care for twenty years, I'm not one of the responsible that I can be for me necessarily, but, um. That was the interest of it, was that it had to be twenty years, and then Northern Borders. Favorite length only ten, one of the guys thought it was ten, and I don't.
If you walked away with the twenty year lease, how confident do you feel that you would get these grants? I mean, you're very confident, so you're scared that the only thing that might be all to be back? Is not having just leases, no other big issues that came up that would get your grants?
I think one of the reasons we had to, uh, change is. They can guarantee spoken.
Yeah, that's true.
Maybe you're looking for guarantee, the guarantee of spoken.
Yeah.
Without it. I mean, that's, you know, I mean, it's optimism trade in the best, most amazing thing about us is eternal, eternal wealth of optimism. But if, without any kind of a guarantee. To have them, I think that's.
Right.
That's, that's, that's good.
I was trying to get a gist of what we're chanting for, Danny, that's your brand. And, 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 you know, we're, we're gonna make a large commitment, yeah, so just wondering what our chances, to make this commitment, you know?
They're, they're federal level grants, they are harder to use. Um, seeing over the loose value makes it easier, um, I have the opportunity to potentially go through the kind of week also, I haven't met, I have a potential risk. So, the, with, some of these are your grants, new salaries are higher, a higher option, or they are the only option of applying for it. Yeah, then I would work on, I would work on the matching part. That's where, like, I wanted to, I think, and I could potentially push them, they, they said that they wanted to only see it first first day. Um, but I could, you know, if I showed them that we're, if they might give me the three thousand dollars to match, C N S is over giving big amounts. Medic said that they would help fund it if they needed to, the, the match, they needed to promote that, so. I mean, that's what I'm asking is to start at least with the, the planning grants, which is, uh. We would apply for in January if we did this, right, roughly. Uh, it's a rolling admissions, January to June.
I believe in some of the reassignment.
Yeah.
With Jacob.
Um, so that would even, that would, you know, determine if you can buy the projects, do anything that is related.
So when you're, if every time you interview, what do you specifically would you do, inside here?
Mostly just like expenses for, for you guys, for us, just, um, kind of thinking. It could be like whether you need it or not. But my, my thought was that to go over, because I mean, property wants change, like, they can't all, um, so I figured. We can, we can do a checking, who knows, maybe we do an energy audit, and we, this rent works out, and we. Streamline P D, I don't know, and it lowers your gap of stocks, and then maybe you can say, okay, so this money, the, the extra money, not asking for the production necessarily, but the extra money could be quite enough to fund to continue maintaining the thing. If there's, yes, but it's a checking, um.
If you're asking for a twenty year lease, you, you really need to understand from our perspective. That, that's a pretty significant commitment for us to make, uh, particularly when it, it, it been a lease like this, would be common. For what's referred to as a triple net lease, which essentially means you cover all costs.
Yeah.
And in this case, we're, we're being asked to, to cover fuel, electricity, and whatever other utilities we need. Uh, you're, you're projecting from January of twenty-five through May of twenty, of forty-four, that the rental rate will be three thousand dollars a month, which. I, I couldn't, I couldn't look myself in the mirror, never mind someone else, and justify it, so.
Yeah.
I, I would just like to see some more information provided, on how that would be, how this would come together. Uh, I'd also like to see the language that, that specifies, if Michael can provide this, that it has to be a twenty year lease, it can't be. Five with multiple five year options, that, your option, that, that type of thing, so that, so that we have a full understanding of it. I think I agree with, with Jared, uh, this is not pushed back from the standpoint that we don't like what you're doing, that we don't think you're doing a right job. It's just trying to be able to justify, uh, signing a twenty year lease, when, when there's a number of variables that are required. And ideally, I think we should identify. Upfront, what, if, what expenses are, are anticipated by the landlord, uh, same for the town. And by you, so that it's, it's not, well, we're gonna apply for this grant, and, and you're gonna apply for that grant, and you get it, so you do the roof, we get it, we'll do the roof. We, we, I think we just got a hearing about.
Yeah. I know, at least like the, the community block grants, um, if, like, if the town is applying on your, your ends, it would be. Four year building, basically, like, it wouldn't be necessarily for me, but again, but it's free money, but it's for money, it's rare money, um.
Could also, could also maybe some kind of stipulation that. You know, the first idea that grants, she doesn't press on the grants, and nothing happens, that that's a way that we take this from the twenty year, we see, we don't see any actions on the grant. Always on the way in the language, something like that, that probably would. Then. But I agree with Billy too, I think there's a lot of open ends here that we're not sure, like, like you said, the responsibility of us. Responsibility of hers, and you could be a little more clear about it, and definitely that many years, uh, the first thing I'd like to do.
I just know that it's not a part of the task.
Yeah.
That's what I was thinking, was the, the cost and everything based on. Our cast, her cast, uh, agreements.
Let's hope they'll know that you've been working with Adam and the bikes, so then they're, they're all in the, the mood together with you. Does this work on TV, but it, it's a lot to ask of you as an individual and the board, uh, because so, so much of this was experiment.
Yes.
And, you know, we, we took a flyer on you, you took a flyer on the town, and it's great to see that it's working.
Working. We have, I put it in here, we have forty-eight kids currently, and one of the reasons we haven't hit the sixty was because, like, some of the roads are too much to. Yeah, they say, we're starting getting there, but some kids are there, like, whoa. So, uh, without some, some modeling justice essentially, if the, we can't really hit our full capacity, but. I mean, we have, we have thirty-four sons and daughters, currently, I don't know, that's forty-eight. And I had to keep it as many, as many sons and daughters as I can. And then the school changing and everything, the next year, okay, we, we're doing a good thing, being this facility. But we don't need to.
One of the comments you made was that maybe in five years you wouldn't want to do it, but maybe the model's not working.
Yeah.
So with, with any of the grants or any of the forgivable loans, are they tied? Are they gonna be tied to that building to be in your lives for childcare? So and then if they are, and you walk away, who, who's on the hook?
Yeah. I don't know. I would probably. I don't, I would kind of wonder. The whole like. Uh, yeah, but, yeah, I don't know. I don't know. I would have to find out. I would assume I would probably fall back on. On the, but the, whoever applied for the grant.
Well, the other piece where it's now a registered nonprofit is it's, the entity is designed to not, you know, not to be up to Allison's.
Yeah.
You know, so it's, she goes with the lottery and retire tomorrow and honey be all, oh, well, sir. Whatever the, the, beginning with the official name. Children's Center would continue, so it's.
That was part.
It gives security too. It's not up to just, she decides she doesn't want to be a child care anymore, it closes up. Ideally with the board, it's designed to transport. But that is a good question. If, you know, it goes out of business next year, are we then gonna have to pay back the million dollars stepping into the building? It's a good question.
Yeah. But yeah, I, the part of, I mean, the main question we came up with nonprofit was to get a, one day it'd more great. And then I've been able to get like little ones to in there, but nothing, nothing substantial enough to help us with the building.
And you say little ones, so how little?
I, I mean, I, they're also in the state, so it's, they're. A bundle of recovery money and, uh, we did get, uh. Rotary, uh. The Elton Rotary, we got a little brand, it took sixty, one hundred dollars to do, or not, a lot of. For purchasing, but we, that acts like a cheap sign. So I, I haven't. Gone for too many because the thing that we need are. Our bigger hook at this point, so, uh, I am working on, uh, the opportunities to succeed grants currently, we, uh. We completed a business optimization, that's what they call it, uh, course through the state, that was through Time Fair Accelerate. And that was an aid for seeing that and we're qualified for twenty like that, but I'm actually going to use some of it for replacing the brand because we took out the, we had a volunteer day that's got the ramp because it was just. Prevented and all the boards were lifting up, so we're going to utilize some of that later to replace the brand. To replace the water and the dryers. Yeah, those things. Yeah.
Keep going there.
We're, I keep going at it and this is what I do. Yeah, it needs some time, but.
This is more questioning. I just wanted to get an initial and maybe we can put some together that we'd like.
How was that?
Appreciate what you know.
Thank you, Tom, it's lovely to have you. To be proud.
Nothing, I am.
You only try to work with.
Thank you.
enforcement officer, like Jasmine, Green, Charles. Uh, we'll, we'll have another opportunity to make.
All right, so you guys, um. Got the, the memos, the bid, bid results, three bids, there's really not only one. You can keep close fitting the budget a little higher than, than I, I hope, still within the budget, not a problem. Um, I did, um, I normally with front buildings, you know, I prefer and, and go for metal roof whenever I can. And this one, I'm gonna backtrack on that a little bit and I'm gonna pull the eight or nine thousand dollar upgrade, whatever it was out of that. Out of the bid for metal because, um, it's still a little wonky. And the next thing I would wanna do of any major consequence again would be going back to the foundation, which is what I want to do before. And I don't wanna do that with a metal roof. Because I may, then there's no roof where the shingles are a lot more likely to flex. And the reality of it is by the time we get, get into that related to money and the rest, I think there's a fair chance. If we would probably be needing, we've done it anyway, in which time maybe, uh, yes. You know, that, that perspective, that kind of history. Um, so. I put fifteen percent on contingency versus the normal ten because everything else is not up, so I figured I call my contingency as well. And that's why I said, uh, that, um, not to exceed price of the other product change.
Construction all the way into snow load if it's not melt?
Yeah, I, I believe so. The engineer, um, Ted calls was good with it, we can have all access to it, and it, it should be fun. Should be fun, just, without a point, it should be fun. Yeah, I feel good about that. We're gonna find out in the next couple of weeks, I'll give some plaster out that thing before we even open the group, group up, we're gonna have another plaster out and first clear. So that, um, make sure that the top plates and the studs are in condition. I think they're in, um, because if they're not, I mean, that can have a different discussion. Uh, but I'm not gonna be able to leave, find out then, so I'm gonna make sure it's in decent shape before we make the move. Best we can. Kind of be a trust room. The trust room. With, uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna call it addict style, only different, I wanted to, to design the trust to be as much open and middle as possible. Only to make, if anyone asks about their friend of reason, just to make their lives better and safer, that's. That's it. Where it's going. I've been enough of them that no one cared about me, so I couldn't possibly do that to somebody else. Um, and it's gonna be, uh, um, they're gonna be able to start work sometime in August. So if it's scheduled, um, I should make a lot of money. But we got, what are they figuring for a time? They didn't really, they didn't, they didn't tell me, they're gonna, they're not gonna finish till they start, um. They were the company that did the door work originally and they finished, um. The old county courthouse, it was the primary patch up, the old county courthouse touching. Um, you know, uh, my catch of it, we, with, with the note, he's really well, spoke highly of them. I know them personally and I find it to be incredibly upright, moral enough to shoot. Straightforward to the team. So I'm feeling pretty good that we have a machine that's able to break it down. Uh, breaking the machine.
It's up there now, I got it right now.
It's up there now?
It was interior, is it shingles?
It's shingles, it's, uh, twelve pine boards and also two by six rafters. One by struts, ish, um, some of them are physically broken.
So you're gonna strip all that off, even the pine board?
The pine board, the rafters, everything, there will be nothing up there.
Nothing.
Open to the sky. Um, same thing we did on, uh. The difference is, is now all we did all in shock. This will probably be more third, a third than the third. Um, to help keep the building from slaying. And originally I wanted to hang on for the gate lens and once we go to contract and rock bottom, I'm gonna try to make that pitch again. Uh, because the way I've designed, but if they feel it's gonna be better and easier to, and end up with the same structure you did not save the gate lens, then. Then we won't save it, but because it's been framed and the rest of it. Just. Not ready with that detail, those cut it and then, and then having a engine, I just not doing great. Hope we don't run into more of that. We will, although we solve the problem. It will. We don't have that. It will, and you still have.
No one does.
Yes, yes. We've got to do nice thousand ton. But no, but seriously, I know that, that happened, but seriously, that's why I'm gonna cut first and all this, uh, before we. You know, a really good idea of what was the entity people were doing to touch the end.
What do you wanna add to their? Price or contingent?
I added fifteen percent, so it went from, uh.
Hundred and five.
Yeah, it's gone from, uh, and I did that by way of, of markup for instance.
Don't think you added it.
Yeah, it was eighty nine thousand seven hundred eleven dollars, eighty nine cents with fifteen percent markup, it goes to a hundred and five, about forty, three, forty. So here it's like ninety. I wondered what I. Those were the three guys. Well, this is the one I'm not actually asking for. That's right.
And we've got, and we've got, they wouldn't do the math.
So I think. Yeah, cause I mean, the digits are just like wild. And it was Steven, I was like, you gotta get in this, right? So, uh, I like that lower one, but the number three, yeah, and my one was almost gonna be upset about that fortunately. Yeah, yeah, I, I felt bad for the guy, but I, I mean, I know for him that was probably just a bit of a. And really, I'm sorry, it's a question. Yeah, yeah, we all did, they kind of dug into that, I mean, it's just, yeah, but.
Cause I need one.
Cause it's not moving it now. Uh, so yeah, I, I think, I think that's where we are, I'm, I'm feeling, I mean, I know that's where we're hitting that a couple of weeks, if you get the badge, and, um. Yeah.
One oh six. One oh six.
Sure. I wanna come in, I wanna come in, almost twenty grand, I don't know, yeah. And I still think, you, you know, we should. It should be closer than ninety, ninety one, but. We all know how it starts.
So my understanding before I. But my decision up there is that you're gonna pull off some more stuff to make sure before we even stop this project.
That's right.
You gotta do a little more research and make sure we don't.
Right, so where the, where the ceiling meets the wall upstairs now.
Got it.
We're gonna take a foot to a foot and a half, a foot extra left off. We're gonna expose the top lid and the studs to make their condition. And if they seem to be in fair condition like we expect them to be. Yeah, off we go. If they're done. We gotta stop, and we gotta figure out what we're looking at and probably pull up more and not end up in, in the stuff where we're pissed while we're. But I wouldn't, I wouldn't ever rip that roof off unless we know what we knew. Now of all, we had the luxury of that space was done, we knew what we had, we could see it in the, the, we, the front of your viewers should see that. Um, which made solving it a lot easier too. Um, but this building, it was.
I went up there, I saw it, and I know.
That, that, that can be old, every building, every building, every building, if you could still see the wood, if I could pull up again before the cover that. That, like, how was that? Nowadays, it's supposed to pay hundreds of thousands of dollars to see the roof.
Yeah, that's one of my main concerns. I never was a big fan of this whole project in the first place, but. In many ways, it looks like there's a lot of people out, so I'm not gonna hold anything back, so I'll make a motion. As rated. To a hundred and six, to a hundred and seven, so.
Motion eight seconded, authorized expenditure to a hundred and six thousand, the Grange Hall repairs. Green, all capital reserve funding authorized, county minister to sign contract offering to the Griffin construction. All the favors say aye. Aye. Aye, so. Thank you, Mike.
Thanks for going. Hey, Mike, can I ask you a question right here? What's going on with the fire station? Uh, did the guy have a come yet? But are, are anything new with the water?
No, I didn't, I didn't, I did, I did reach out to, um, the contractors for the, um. Split units, they want like any of them to take the head, it's in the. Prioritization out, the line set out, so we can patch the hole. Then when we patch the hole, then they can do a new wall, and when they put the new line set in, what we're gonna have them do is put a drip loop in. So when you look at a new service entry cable like that, or anything even a normal, right, you look at it, and that cable comes off the telephone, goes into the house, it's that loop. The purpose of that loop is to collect rain, the rain in the water, get the bottom of it and inject it. So we're gonna do the same thing with that line set, so we can hook it, so that it's a little direct. And not follow as much, uh, in, uh, the potential to follow it in. And, um, uh, working with him, and he showed us an A hole about putting, uh, get the number on, on. Gutters and they're expecting to follow that into seven.
And what about the window?
I haven't done anything with the window yet.
Do that, you'd have someone come in and take that window out and redo it? It's like water came out.
I'll probably do that, though. We'll see. We'll see if we can do the whole thing.
Yeah, cause I went there and I lost hands on it and everything was wet.
Yeah, 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 and, and then, um. Yeah, so, yes, still living, still getting the time.
Great. I'd just like to be kept in the loop with that, if you don't mind. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, you good?
Moving on to new business, fire station committee discussion.
So, uh, and what I did, we talked before about putting a committee together that would, would help us to bring. The fire stations are, so I provided a list of names to Michael and he's reviewed them, there's thirteen or fourteen names on there. And then. Uh, what, what would our next step be? They, maybe these guys need to know the names. If you email it to them. Yeah, listen. Can then maybe coordinate through you if there's any changes.
Well, I don't think we want a fourteen person committee, right?
No, but I didn't, I didn't view it as a fourteen person executive committee. It, uh, my thought was that we, we've never had enough people involved. And what Wally used to tell us, when Wally used to come, is you gotta market, you gotta market, you gotta market. So my thought was that with this group of people, five or so, an odd number would be the executive committee. And then the balance would, would be people who would work on marketing or gathering data. And then bringing it forward to, to the executive committee. There's some people that are very good at LinkedIn and Facebook and all of these things, and I'm certainly not one of them. But we wanna have people like that, that would, would make sure that we're publicized for the best we can.
Is this, we're always involved with the new fire station, meaning, yeah, give us ideas, how we can move on with it, right? Yeah, oh, yeah.
I think the big thing to make clear is what, what are we asking to look at? Are we asking to start from? Ground zero, or are we saying, just, yeah, I think it's important to make it clear.
I think I'd like to see them bring back some options, everything's like, like, don't do the new fire station for five years. Take our money and we upgrade what we got, or different options, different ideas to attack this. I'd like to see that. I'd like to see us, you know, give us some options, you know, investigate. What everybody brought up, the cutler school and investigate multiple ways that we could choose, right? Then just push the one.
Well, yeah, but in, in terms of the cutler school or low cop school, we don't know. And that, and they're not coming to us.
That's true.
So, but in terms of, of what we want sire saying, everything should be on the table.
Right.
But so there's, there's people that think we need two stations, and people that think we need three stations, people that think it should go where it is. Think it should be in Swan D Center, there should be.
Or people that even don't need it.
There, well. There, there is, and, and all of that has to be, has to be answered, but if we don't need it, then we gotta close. So what, what, but that's what I'm, I agree with Slott, I think everything is. I would like to see us do a tour of the Westland Station, uh, because that's one that could get passed. And, and it may very well satisfy our, our needs, it is, but we had, we had a location that we discussed and we're gonna bring up. Public because somebody else owns the property, but I think we, we would want that to look at, at that as well. Uh, because it's, it's a property that, that we thought made sense, the timing just didn't work. But yeah, I think everything, you know, when would you want to report back? I think the ideal is, I told.
Oh, to that together, right? It's in the theater, right?
Well, yeah, I know we have to roll out with public hearings and. And, and all and, and be ready for a war.
So. In other words, move fast, gotta.
Yeah, or maybe they get into it far enough and they realize we can't make that, that line, we can't make the twenty five. More, but we could make the twenty six one, but doesn't mean the word does it detract it. Just. See, and see how it rolls.
And how does that work though? Like, they, they would do their own meetings and everything like that, and they would come to us and sit in front of us and explain to you what they.
Well, one of us might be, might be on the committee, uh, just like we are C I P C. Uh, E D A, planning board, that's a possibility.
Slott would love that. Slott would love that.
He's on C I P C, what are you doing?
I love it, Billy, I think that's fantastic that you could find that like that. It's awesome. We did well need it, we need this.
We've got people with the work.
When you gotta get such a mile, we will there, this list that you came up with. And you gotta get some of my people there, this list that you came up with, how did you do that? Just some people that you know, that you're over there, people who have done the same.
No, no, we're genuinely.
And you actually got all these people on board that they don't go.
I don't want to, for you, have you guys say, no, we don't want that person.
So we don't even know if we're gonna get guesses out of the five of the fourteen.
We'll, we'll be guesses, we love. We will. We will, there there are people that want to come to this, that is awesome.
That's great.
I'm just, I'm not honest, but I just don't know how you would proceed, normally we would close for creating many, let us know if people are doing. And then we wait until they come in, so it's just a little different approach. Right, so that's why I don't, that's why I'm clear.
I think the next step would be for these guys to see the list, and I can't send it, so.
Great.
About those. That we're putting together a committee. And proactively, so I did vibes for these people. Sure, well, you guys have a degree. I can't kick anybody off of this, I just say. We're putting together a committee, are interested. So I, and then we might get somebody from the outside. You know, and he flies up the realm, has some really good input.
Mike, why are you, um, it seems to me like it's not good to just have a live committee. It is, it's not, why is as.
Well, so if you have fourteen people, you need seven or eight to be there to be for them. And every decision has one last to go around, and remember, the King City Council, they don't do it, they don't make any decisions after fifty people sitting at the table, they have all some. File of them, and they make the recommendations, then the thing. Which it kind of sounds like it's what those suggestions, but I find usually larger committees, try to get bought in for that. Smaller groups, three, five, maybe seven.
See, that's what I was saying, you would select from the from the group of executive committee, and then work, work the others to help us.
They're taking their own methods.
There you go. Thanks.
Thank you. Have a good night, you going on vacation?
Yeah, I went to the school, it's class. The realtors give them the award.
Oh, really? You get one? I don't get it, I mean, grab mine, I will.
Land and water conservation one grant, they update with Swansea A A in the morning of park. Anything else? We're approaching, approaching both the open screen, uh, what's the update? I guess it's a no brainer, the governor and council approve. The area permission made and also seconded. Authorized town administrator signed grant agreement documents related to. And more kinds of fund grant improvements, and what's wanted made in the morning of park, all in favor, say aye. Aye, the A I seven. Requested expenditure town hall postage meter. So it is, it has approved, problem actually, apples to apples, uh. Close thus far, different companies, so I don't know if we're okay, maybe just three up in the pitney bones, those that are leased within. Budgeted funds, or if you want me to continue to shop around, if you want me to share what we're looking at. Because the the price difference is like seventy nine to the visual, maybe same, same change, which they confirm. So it's just.
You want to do another week or so?
So I feel like the problem is, I think the postage meter runs out of. A C, uh, on the post, it's like a software, I think that can't do something, so. They're comfortable letting maybe a four, and I can report back, they're like, it's gonna, it's not, it's not gonna break the budget. So the motion would be to authorize you? Well, it would be decided, it would be decided. I'm happy with that.
Yeah, I understand it, and I I am happy with that, I. But I get it.
It's just another thing for you to do.
Yeah.
So what do we do?
Just to sign, it's a sign of the lease. All second. All in favor? Aye, the A I seven, good luck with that. Requested expenditure fire station free expenses from twenty three edition. Thirty six thousand six twenty five sixty six battles. Reserved fire station stock.
It's that or agents, what is that?
It's for the initially dead ones here.
We need to do more.
No, it's, it's.
Oh, okay.
I thought that the charts of the operator, that's a last year, I think there's the flooding. It's gonna clean out, clean out the box for the account. Right, motion made, and I'll second, unauthorized expenditure of the thirty six thousand six twenty five sixty six from the fire station's cap or reserve fund. Twenty twenty three expenses related to the fire station period issue. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the A I seven, thank you. Any old business? Administrator update. Correspondence. Public input. Bite of the apple, Mark. What are you doing here? No upcoming agenda items, except. Well, we're gonna talk about, they put it here, Serge crossing. Next meeting, some remnants of Serge crossing, went to the grocery store, and all, all the gear speeding, so. And we have any, uh, public? Gonna do that, one break, yeah.